This meeting is being held remotely due to the COVID nineteen restrictions. An executive order from the governor of Massachusetts relieves public bodies from the requirement. And an open meeting law that meetings be conducted in a public place. That this, that is open and physically accessible to the public. Provided that the public body makes provisions to ensure the public access to deliberations through telephone, internet. Or satellite enabled audio or video conferencing. Or any other technology that enables the public to clearly follow the proceedings of this public body in real time. In addition, all members of the public body may participate in this meeting remotely. An open meeting law requirement that a quorum of the body and their chair be physically present at the meeting locations is suspended. All other provisions of the open meeting law such as the requirements regarding posting of the notice of the meeting. Creating and maintaining accurate meeting minutes as well as limited and enumerated purposes for holding an executive session remain in effect. With a quorum of this board present, I call this meeting to order at seven forty P M Tuesday, April eighth, twenty twenty five. So do we have any executive or administrative matters? We need Jay for that.
Well, we can, maybe we can talk about the fact that the selectmen approved the text of the M O U.
Okay.
And. I might want to add like a sentence or two that are not material. I wanted to emphasize, put in a sentence emphasizing. A development that encourages small businesses in the core. I think, I think that may have been it. I don't, I don't see that at all as a material change. Reason me what the selectman would have looked at. And the selectmen. Also asked if we wanted to have it reviewed by counsel. My feeling is. I think it's in good enough shape to go to Marlboro for their comments and so on. And that we should consider maybe reviewing the last draft with counsel because I don't think anybody thinks there's anything in there that. You know, that it's, that it's dire and that, you know, they may add some stuff or add some formalities to it. Uh, that would also have to be reviewed.
Yeah, I like that idea.
I agree. That way we don't have to waste our money.
Yeah. Yep, okay. Well, I, I, I felt a little bit of dead air there. I'll, uh, Tim, I will add that sentence and send it to you and maybe you can. Yeah, I can actually give you some language for. The introduction to it and, and if you would send it along and then we can follow from there.
Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you. Um, other news, we've. We posted the hearing. It's in the newspaper and it's been sent to the adjoining towns and the other two organizations that need to get it. So that was done. So we're legal for the two articles on the warrant. Um, I do have a bill which I will find for the payment of the newspaper. Let me track that down so I can call out the amount.
Our wayward Mr. Teach has arrived.
All right.
Hello.
Hello. Good evening.
Oops, I can't hear anybody. Can't hear anybody.
We can hear you.
There we go. Push the right button.
There we go.
What time is the meeting again?
It, yeah. It's seven forty-five with adjustments.
Yeah.
Right on time then.
We were just ready to take a, a, a motion to accept the minutes of the last meeting. Before you joined.
I will make that motion.
Excellent. And Jay seconded it. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask you to vote. Colin McDonald.
Hi.
Timothy Wheeler.
Hi.
Thomas Andrew.
Hi.
Jay Teach. I'm Tom Sanford. Hi. Motion carries unanimous. Thank you. So seven forty-four. Jay, do you have the information for the sign for the island comments?
I sent, yeah, I sent it all to you, right?
Uh, I never, sorry. Can you put it on the screen?
Yeah, did you guys all get an email from me with like a ton of attachments?
No, no.
That was in your dream. That we just woke you up from.
Yeah, it was sent to seven forty-four, I guess.
Wow, because there was a whole ton of stuff. I know I sent it. Let me just look here. Maybe the file was too big or something.
Oh, maybe.
Yeah, here it is. Eleven fifty-five A M. I have the new version outlook, which is different than the old version. So I sent it to planning board and only sent it to me.
Okay. Did you get it?
Get it. Without all the attachments though.
Oh, that's an improvement in the new version.
Wow. Oh my goodness, there was a billion attachments too.
Yeah, thanks.
Here's one with all the attachments. Huh, I wonder how I get it to send it to the right people though.
Can you bring them up on the screen? Because we're not going to be able to read them beforehand anyway at this point.
Yeah, I can, you know, for some reason. All of the like, uh, Q, um, caches, you know, like. All the files have been working on, so you can just hit a button and send them. And apparently all of my. Email groups are not, um, showing up anymore.
Transfer over.
So it took me hours to get it moved over to. Okay, so we're looking for signs. Does this thing, let me share my screen. Never upgrade the new software. It's the. Lot line here. How do I get rid of this? There's this whole set of data here, but you probably know what you want to look at, right? You want to look at the drawings, but. Oops, that's me. Where is it here? Clean gun sign.
I like that as a Highland common sign.
Letter.
So I think you have to, so on the preview screen, see where it says open?
Over here.
No, over on the left.
Okay, hang on a second.
Yep, you can't see where I'm pointing.
No. Full screen of a drawing.
There you go.
Can make sure what screen I'm showing you. Is that a full screen of drawings now?
Yeah.
Okay. So they said this, but I don't know where the actual sign is.
Um, if you look at the third row down.
Third row down.
They're tucked in. They're to the left of one-ten grill. Not that far. There you go.
Right, so, right, Ramen Haven.
Oh, there it is.
You got it.
Well, so that's very interesting. So Gong Cha, this is mirror image of the way it really is.
He's on the back, I think, right now.
Oh, okay.
Right, yep.
Yeah.
I wonder where the front is.
You had it.
Right here?
Yep.
T-Mobile is to the left of it.
Great.
There you go.
There you go.
Perfect. And they're well below the threshold of what they're allowed. So. If you want, I'll move that we accept the Ramen Haven sign as presented as appropriate and in compliance.
Again.
Hey, we have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? No comments? Okay, I will ask you to vote to approve the sign that it's in compliance. Ramen Haven is in compliance. Carolyn McDonald.
Hi.
Timothy Wheeler.
Hi.
Jay Teach.
Hi.
Thomas Andrew.
Hi.
And Tom Sanford. Hi. Motion carries unanimous. Perfect, thank you.
Um, let's go back and find the next item. So, there you go. Come on.
Yeah, handsome guy again.
You're talking about the horse, of course.
Of course.
Where is it?
Have you ever talked to a horse, of course, right?
Um, okay, we're moving on to Ever Home.
Well, that's eight, so we still have.
Still at nine minutes.
Yeah, we still have.
Send you, I'll, I can send you this email in the meantime then, but how do I get all you guys?
Alright, so I would stop screen sharing. There you go.
May I make a motion, Mr. Chairman?
Absolutely.
I'd like to have us pay a hundred and thirty-five dollars and twenty-four cents to the. Item for two, um, episodes in the Clinton item posting our hearing for the twenty-second.
I will second that.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to pay a hundred and thirty-five twenty-four to the item for our hearing postings. Any further discussion? Anybody want to comment? Okay, seeing none, I'll ask you to vote. Carolyn McDonald.
Hi.
Timothy Wheeler.
Hi.
Thomas Andrew.
Hi.
Jay Teach.
Hi.
And Tom Sanford. Hi. Motion carries unanimous. Do you have a warrant?
I'll fill that out and get it around the folks.
Excellent, thank you.
Um, I checked the mail today.
Oh, good. Truck full of stuff?
No, not really. I got rid of a ton of stuff, but, um. We have a application for a preliminary plan of a subdivision for. The parcel behind the vet.
Oh, yes, they have changed that.
So it's a six-unit subdivision. And so we have, I, there was no, I, I didn't ask the town clerk if they received a check. If there's no check, it's not a formal plan yet, so.
She said she got a, what'd she get here?
She did get a check then?
Uh, she got a Form B, I think she said. No check. We received a, no check, that's what she said.
No check means no, no formal application, so, um. I can, I can just let them know that their application isn't complete. They only sent six copies. I think our bylaws is they have to send more. They didn't send a ton of copy.
I think our bylaws is ten.
Yeah, because we need to get it around everybody. So I, I can reach out to them and just say, we need the check, we need the electronic filing and we need more copies. And when we get those, the clock will start ticking. I think for a preliminary, we've got, well, we've got quite a while before we have to. Get formal, I think, but, um, I don't think, we wouldn't necessarily need to bring them in before town meeting.
No.
Um, we can do our hearing and then tell them to come to see us in May or something like that. So if that's all right with you, I can reach out to them and tell them. What they've got to do and tell them we'll talk to them in May. Is that all right? Okay. Yeah, it's six units, four on one side of the railroad, two on the other. A new subdivision road between the. The vet and the blue house with a modification to that lot. So, yeah, we'll.
So was the, the filing. For the land swap that they're doing or was it for the subdivision?
Well, it's for the subdivision. You've seen a proposal for the land swap. This. Shows the land swap. That the. I mean, we, we really can't talk about this too much, I suppose, but.
They need to come into us for the land swap though, right?
Well. I think. At our next meeting, we should probably have some discussion about that, so we can explain that to them as well, because. If.
Well, our next meeting is the hearing, right? So I would suggest we do that after town meeting.
Well, but we could have this preliminary discussion just to understand the implications of the land swap and whether it needs to precede the filing for the subdivision. Because the land swap, the subdivision is dependent on an approval for a land swap.
Right, yeah, I think, I think the, uh, the answer to that is we can't look at a plan. That has a contingency for a prior approval.
I think, I think you're right. So we, I think we can't really talk about it tonight, so. We can talk about it next time and then inform them what we'd expect in May. Is that?
Okay.
Yeah, because that hearing is at eight, right?
What?
The hearing is at eight.
Yeah, I mean, we could.
So we can talk for fifteen minutes before the hearing.
Yeah.
That'd be more than enough time.
But we just put that on our agenda so we can legally deal with it, I guess. And then hopefully we'd have an electronic copy of the. Plan so we could at least preliminarily look at it and decide what we need to do about the land swap and which has to proceed, which.
Right.
What is the land swap, by the way?
It, it provides for access for the subdivision road between.
Oh.
Vet and the blue house to the east of it on sixty-two. And the land swap would provide land behind the house.
Right.
But there's a. Because the frontage is reduced, we have to make some decisions about what that land swap needs to entail. Initially before, you know, there's a chicken and egg issue here, which is a little different wrinkle than we normally see.
Plus, there's, there's behind that blue house and then behind Tops, it's, it's wet in there, isn't it?
It is.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's one of the few, well, they, the, the. Common driveway, I guess, is probably what they're planning on doing, um, would. Oh, right, okay, so then the road would have a crossing of the perennial stream that is behind there, which is why I know about it.
So we can get insight from the Conservation Commission at our next meeting too, because you, you have some thoughts as well.
Yep.
Great, thanks.
And we're right up against the time. Look at that.
Look at us.
Nice job.
You guys know that the Tarvis is for sale, right?
Oh, yeah, there's actually a big sign on, up there.
Yes, it's five acres.
How much is it listed for? Do we know?
Billion, even.
One million even?
It needs to be another sign that says half of this or two-thirds of this is under an easement.
Yeah.
It's good, if you go to listing, it's not on Zillow and all these Realtor dot com and all stuff. It's only on the broker who's got the sign up. It's a actual broker and they have more pictures on the listing which includes showing. I don't think they highlight the wetlands, but you can see it because there's little symbols on the map. And I think they show the C R and the zoning, because part of that is A R and part of it's A R C. And, and they've got that shown.
Oh, good.
I think they, it said that they were, had attached or a link or something to the zoning bylaw, but I didn't see that actually when I went to. So I think they're being more realistic about it than the previous.
Good.
Proponents.
Hmm.
Mm-hmm.
Not much.
So do we have, uh, members that are going to present to us in the audience?
So a gentleman named Tim O'Donnell has his hand up. Is that who I'm promoting?
Please.
Right.
Right, Tim?
Hey, can you guys hear me?
Yep.
We can. Okay, awesome. How's it going today?
Good, how are you?
Good. My Zoom is being weird. Can you guys see my face as well or just hear me?
Just hear you.
Okay, got it. Um, we'll be having, um, it's somebody else on the team named Matt Kemp. Is he in the waiting as well? Yeah, he'll, um, he's actually, so I'll do a quick introduction. So my name's Tim O'Donnell, work for Highside Development. Uh, we partner with Choice Hotels, um, to build this Ever Home Suites, um, hotel product. It's a, um. One of the newer hotel products that they're rolling out. It's an upper mid-scale, um, extended stay hotel. Um, but they're kind of building throughout the country. We have partnered with Choice and. We have turned over, I think, five or six at this point, and then we have another fifteen or sixteen under construction. Um, so our, I'll kind of turn it over actually to Matt Kemp. He's, um, on the architecture team. He's done the prototype design for this. And then is also our project architect who would be doing this job, you know, from, uh. He'd be doing the drawing, taking the prototype, doing all the design work and then doing all the construction administrative work as well. So. If you could turn it over to Matt, he'll share his screen and kind of go through our, some of our site plan and our high-level drawings.
Uh, Tim, I'm, um, I'm on my phone. I can join by, uh, computer here in a minute. Uh, any chance that you have that document ready?
Yeah, sure.
Me. Okay.
Right.
Um, yeah. Or go ahead.
I think I have to promote you to a panelist in order for you to share your screen.
Got it.
So let me do that. I have to put you back in the audience first.
And then while he's doing that, um, you know, just to prep you before the documents come through, yeah, this is Matt Kemp. Fun with B R R Architecture. Um, we work pretty closely with the brand, uh, Choice Hotels. And this is one of their newest brands that they're excited about. So, um, a lot of things are fairly typical to what you'd expect in terms of. Like four-story wood construction, hundred and sixteen key, but then, um, we add in like an amenity space in the back to where there's grills. And a turf area for, uh, yard games, outdoor seating, and then inside we have, you know, fitness room. Uh, like a marketplace, a lounge, um, handful of different amenities for. Uh, for everyone, and then it's a mix of single rooms, one bedrooms, queens, double queens, um, kind of a wide array of, of room types. And, um, the exterior, uh, when we pull that up is a mix of a handful of different materials. We. Do a lot of, uh, engineered stone at the first floor for, uh, just design impact and aesthetics and then. Um, typically on the upper floors, uh, scored ephes and different colors and patterns and, uh, stone ledges just to help give it some accent and pop. So we can show, show those here in just a second. And then it, um, it also has, um, cooking, uh, in kitchen areas like kitchenettes in the rooms too. So people can, um, make their own meals too if they're staying for a longer time. There's a mix of people that stay, uh, short-term at these. And then some people who will, um, actually stay here for, um, you know, uh, call it home for a week or two and, and cook their meals in the spot.
Yeah, and, and I think to kind of provide a little bit more context as well, like Matt was saying, so our, um. Kind of, you know, on the choice end, they've been reaching out to the seller of this parcel at the, I'll actually show the site plan now. Um, looks like in the River Bridge, um, development, um, we're looking at that parcel, I think it's lot nine D. Um, that has, I believe it's two-point-oh-six acres, um, you guys wear two-point-oh-one acres, which is right up against, um. Kind of the amount of acreage we normally can to kind of fit our full-size prototype in here. Um, so what B R R put together, because we, from looking at your code as well, I see that you guys for hotels want a one-to-one parking ratio. Um, so with our lot size as shown, um, it looks like, you know, this is a very rough site plan. We'll need to have, you know, our civil engineer to a fully designed one. Uh, that basically we could get a hundred and eleven spots, um, with our hundred and sixteen key, um, hotel, um, for talking to.
You're, you're not actually sharing.
Oh, I thought I was. Well, thank you, Carolyn. Alright. Alright, can you guys see it now?
There you go.
Alright, awesome. Um, so actually while we're talking, I'll have, these were some of the elevations, um, that Matt was talking about. Um, you can see we have our stone here, so, uh, if, or this is a, um, like Nietzsche hardwood paneling. Um, some ephes around the outside. We actually do a, a custom, uh, mural here that will work with like a local artist. Who will design that, which is always a nice cool piece on each of these. Um, as Matt was also saying, you know, this is just. Four-floor or four stories, um, about fifty feet from, uh, to the top of the parapet at the roof, um, mix of queens, double queens, kings. And then in the first floor, um, the amenity areas, uh, our fitness room, guest laundry, um, it's like the back of house laundry area. Um, lounge, we have a little marketplace as well. No hot served, not, no hot food is served in the marketplace. It's really just like chips. Uh, soda, coffee, stuff like that. Um, and then the outdoor amenity area that Matt was also referencing is back here. I don't know from that, we included this in our pictures, but this outdoor amenity area, I don't think we did, but it includes some grills here to the right. Um, some seating area, it's a little extra equipment storage area as well, some fire pits as well, um. And yeah, it's like a nice fence that goes around the outside, so, um, kind of situating ourselves where it is. So it's in the River Bridge Development. Uh, we have another apartment development right here, and then you have the, uh, rotary that pass at Road in River Road West right here. Um, again, we just started kind of look, you know, really engaging with the seller and looking at those properties, so we still need to engage with the civil to design it, but this is our high level. Um, kind of thought process for how we'd be oriented and, and located along the site. So I guess kind of, I'll even, you know, I have a few kind of questions for you guys regarding kind of site feasibility and timelines, but maybe I'll open it up. If you guys have any questions from Matt and me ranting for kind of ten minutes about the project.
Can, can you tell me what's to the north of your lot line? Okay, so that is. The access road.
Correct.
And, and a. Okay, now I see. Thanks. I was just trying to get an orientation as to how you were gonna. Utilize that.
Yeah, and Matt, correct me if I'm wrong here, but we basically have an entrance here on the north of the access road and then one. It wouldn't be off the rotary, it would be a little bit off here, right?
Yeah, that's correct. And then that access road could still be maintained and we could tie into that. So definitely want to make sure what makes sense for. Uh, the spaces around us, but that was the intent is to tie into that.
So can you show the north again, the upper side? So it. I guess I'm, I, I have, I assumed that there's a road there.
Yeah, so that's what that access easement is right now, and maybe we can also pull up, uh, my Google Maps to take a look at it too, but that dash line on both sides of the property line. Is an, uh, existing access easement that's being used for that road.
Okay, so your, your parking would, would be really on top of that right away for that road.
No, it looks.
Jason.
Right.
Be adjacent to the road, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Is that road, um, immovable? Tim, do you know that?
Sorry, say that again, Jay?
Is that road immovable? It doesn't have to be exactly at that location or it's just kind of dotted in at that?
I think it's already, I'm gonna pull it up.
Yeah, I don't think it's built.
Yeah, that's, that's the road, the secondary road into the apartment.
They needed that for fire access.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it's already built, I thought.
I was just wondering, um. Right now you've got the front of the hotel and the parking right up against River Road West with no kind of, no buffer, right?
Well, the parking lot.
Yeah, but parking lots, the road, there's no green space, sidewalk, anything. I was wondering whether the, the whole thing could be moved back, take the. Row of parking on the far right. And move it up to where that, we were just talking about where that, uh, road is. You know what I'm saying? Because then you'd be able to put in a buffer, some grass and trees and stuff in the front.
Yeah, and we can look at those things. Um, this is just kind of a preliminary feasibility study to get in front of your team to get first thoughts. And then we'll put it, you know, engage our civil engineer and take a look at, you know, what additional setbacks or requirements or landscaping that we can do to, to make it work in the site.
So that was your first thought?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so this is the north. This is that road. I mean, I guess you're right, it isn't paved, but this is, I guess, the property line. I don't know exactly where in relation to the. This, uh, sidewalk it is.
Well, your, your lot line seems to be in the middle of the, the way.
Um, it is, it splits, the road split between nine D and whatever, nine B, whatever's above it.
Right, so I was just trying to get a sense as to whether or not. Your plan is actually. Drawing you into that right away more than, uh, is indicated on the plan. And that actually you may be shorter of potential parking than you realize. But you'll engineer that later. So I mean, that's just a question I think you have to address.
Yeah, for sure. No, and appreciate that. And as you said, we're kind of, we are very, um. Preliminary, high level and just making sure from a feasibility perspective and, you know, this all works, so I'm making a note on that, on my.
I mean, it's, if, if you were to lose the ten parking spaces that are shown on the. Plan that are on the north extension of the site, you'd be short closer to fifteen than.
Um, yeah, so I'm just pulling up, this is the, uh. It's just kind of the plan also we got here. And just to be clear, because there was a little bit of confusion, this lot ninety has already been subdivided, correct?
Right.
Okay.
We signed a plan for that in the summer or fall that created.
Okay.
Nine D. Um, with that tab that comes in from nine. D maybe, or whatever it is to the lower part of the screen, because there's a, there's the need for the, yeah, that. That influx of rectangular space into your lot or nine D. Um, is to accommodate parking that would help the cafe liquor store, um, over time.
Got it, okay, makes sense. And, um, and I guess, and obviously as we were. As we were looking at our hotel and, you know, our prototype, we kind of showed you some of the, you know, high-level elevations. We mentioned four stories, like. It's forty, I guess, what, what is the exact, uh? The exact height is just under fifty feet, um, you know, but I will say our amenity area and because of, because of the extended stay prototype. Like the, the first floor, um, amenity areas, they're present, but they're. I, I don't know the percentage off the top of my head, but is. areas, they're present, but they're, I, I don't know the percentage off the top of my head, but is there in the zoning, I couldn't exactly see it, because there, we've seen before, like a percentage of the first floor needs to be, you know, X percentage needs to be amenity spaces and can't be rooms. Is that something you guys are kind of concerned about, and is there a percentage that we should be aware of?
I mean, that's never been anything we've included in the bylaw.
That is good, that's good to know, it can work for some of the questions, so um, to think of other
I mean, it's, it, when I look at your, your rendering and I look at the scale, I, it's like there's a twin growing across the street from the, from the hotel that's there.
Yeah, the, the homewood that's there, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's um, the, the stone on the first floor, the interesting.
Yeah, well, that's honestly, that's a good thing, because that um, the Homewood Suites, that, that Hilton product is a um, that's definitely, that's a, you know, higher-end extended stay product than like a Wood Spring Suites or uh, ESA or something like that. So we do try to mirror ourselves closer to the, you know, the home wood than some of the um, more economy scale brands. So that is the, the hope, but they, uh, they um, you know, as I said, this is our prototype, we built plenty of like kind of pictures, I think, of, of other ones that have been being built. Um, I guess just on, on your end, and I did, and I did talk to, um, I've talked to Richard a few times over the past few weeks. I think he mentioned he talked to you guys, just getting, you know, high-level timelines for building permit approvals, asking kind of some zoning questions. Um, he, he had kind of said, you know, hey, you'll meet in front of the planning board a couple of times, um, kind of throughout the process. So I, I guess on your end, if we're pushing this project forward, um, kind of what are the next steps for you guys and what are the timelines associated with steps?
So in, in this case, because it's in an overlay district, the planning board has the responsibility for a site plan approval. So you'd continue to talk to us as you're sort of preliminarily talking to us now. And, you know, we, we try to be thorough, but at the same time, we try to accommodate people's schedules as best we can, and usually that's reasonably possible. I, you know, I think the, the question, you've got, you've looked at our zoning bylaw, you've looked at the overlay district, you've seen the cases in which um, sections of the ma- main part of the zoning bylaw apply for an overlay and those that um, the overlay allows certain parameters to change instead of having to follow the letter of the law with the regular zoning bylaw. That's one of the reasons we've, we've gone with these overlays. Berlin, um, we, we take these overlay projects to town meeting and they're voted on in somewhat specific terms, because we really want the town to buy into the concept of what's being proposed. And, and then once that's accomplished, the planning board deals with the site plan approval process. The, the thing I think that the planning board will try to evaluate is how clearly a, a project like this fits into the perceived notion in people's minds as to what they approved when the overlay was first created. The, the hotel was listed as a use, and, you know, as we modified the zoning, but um, and so it's a, it's a use that's allowed. And the four stories is allowed. Conceptually, when we first looked at this whole project, we really um, assumed that there would be in front of the apartments um, structures that weren't as sizable as this, so that it would moderate the impact of the, the three-story apartments that are behind this. And, and not, and so it would not create quite as much of a canyon effect as you come through that corridor with the, the two hotels. Um, that doesn't mean that, you know, we'd dismiss this, uh, it just means that that's I think one of the discussions that we'll probably have as we proceed and try to encourage other town boards and citizens to chime in as to how they would feel about um, this type of proposal as opposed to some of the other options that might perhaps come along.
Yeah, and appreciate uh, that, Tim, and I guess even to uh, to kind of elaborate on that, you know, let us, you know, obviously, we, we would love to build here, and we, we want you guys in the township to want us to be here as well, right? So um, if there is, you know, as, in terms of us kind of moving forward here, we definitely want to at least understand for, you know, in terms of purchase of the property, you know, what is the the planning commission and the board, you know, perception of the hotel, and will, are they going to be kind of accepting of this? So if there is anything that you could do on your end, or you need from us in order to kind of um, get that question of, you know, is this hotel something that is, that will more than likely not be accepted, that would be huge, because it kind of affects, you know, on our end, whether it's you know, we definitely would want that question answered forward anymore with the seller, if that, if that makes sense.
No, normally when you approach a, a project like this, what is your, your um, timeframe? How, how do these move along through the process?
Yeah, you know, that's a good question. So normally, um, you know, because this is a, you know, prototype hotel, the design process doesn't take uh, as long, so we'd really, you know, once we purchase the land, which we're in PSA negotiations for now. Um, so really the, the thought would be, you know, signing up within the next week to, let's say, month, maybe one to four weeks, you know, depending on how negotiations go. But once we, basically hit, um, purchase the property, we hire Geotech in phase one right away, do all of that work. Um, get that organized, we hire a civil within a few weeks, get them running, and then we would hire a um, architect. You know, or the B R R team to move forward as well. So if I'm looking to the, you know, we have a schedule here that I'll actually look up on my end. Um, but we do, so basically, our first kind of civil, I have here that our first civil site plan, um, some middle would basically be submitted on, around the second week of May. Um, and that's what I'm talking, I was talking with W D A, the local civil engineer, um, I think did the other plan. Um, who did that master community there, um, and then we'd have a building permit set. Uh, we probably, you know, depending on how the planning review go, and kind of from guidance from you, sometimes we try to submit for building permit. Um, while the planning review process is going on. Um, so if that is possible, we'd submit for planning right after that, and basically the design team would already be working on their uh, architecture scope. But theoretically, we, you know, normally the, the design, you know, if we're looking at exact timeframes, we could have the project basically fully designed in about three months. And then, and it go on from there, be kind of the entitlement process, and your guys is then for how long it would take.
Okay, I think one of the things that would be, would be very helpful to us is for you to identify any variances you need from the existing overlay zone.
Okay.
Um, because if you don't require any variances, then you're talking about an application of the bylaw in this committee. If you're talking about variances, or if you're talking about a potential amendment to it, then that's a whole, that's a whole different thing, and you're not before us. You, it involves other
Yeah.
aspects of the town. So I think that's a threshold question, if you identify those things. If there are any, um, that will enable us to answer your question. I don't think we can answer it tonight.
Yep.
Mark Twain said, um, it's tough to make predictions, especially about the future, you know, so we, we need to, we need some sort of basic data to really answer the question you just asked.
Yep. No, I, no, I appreciate, I appreciate that. Yeah, well, um, again, we've done a high-level uh, you know, review of the zoning, and as I mentioned, it was kind of like the parking was the, the one that jumped out at us, um, but we will do a more detailed thorough review, um, and identify any areas um, that would qualify for that, so.
Thank you. I think that's, that's a really helpful first step for us.
Yep, of course.
And the other thing you got to realize is that we um, we have a, a town meeting coming up early May, so we have some commitments that we have to make as a board hearings that we have to hold and things like that, so we try to react um, to proponents, but uh, we're in a little bit of a crunch now for ourselves as a board. So um, it will, you know, timing might work out in favor for everybody, if you're, you know, four or five weeks before you'll have something absolutely concrete that we can start to deliberate about, but if we need to react quicker than that, it may be we may discuss, have to discuss putting extra meetings on or something like that.
And, sorry, Tom, just to make sure I'm understanding, so that town, that town meeting is a meeting, basically, you, you as the planning commission, you'll meet with the town and kind of present new opportunities.
A couple of articles on the warrant, so we, we need to, um, we need to hold public hearings, and then we have to do a report at town meeting and sort of shepherd those through, and hopefully get a a positive vote, and then they will uh, be incorporated into our bylaws, but uh, so there's a little bit of lifting we have to do on our end.
Yeah, and I think, so what I think Tom is saying is, if you go off with the input you have from tonight and aim to maybe give us something in the first week or so of May.
Yeah.
Uh, we can react to it, I think, fairly promptly thereafter, because we'll be through town meeting. Is that fair, Tom?
That's accurate.
Okay.
More elegant than I put it, Thomas.
Uh, but just to be clear, um, town meeting is for, for those of you not from New England, town meeting is how we run the town, and so this is our annual town meeting at which the yearly budget gets voted, any capital purchases, anything like that. Um, so nothing that we're talking about now would be presented at that meeting.
No, of course, of course. No, all we're saying is we're really not going to be equipped to consider anything.
We're gonna be a little busy.
Until after that, and um,
If they drop a plan on this in two weeks, we're not gonna be able to touch it.
And so while we're doing all that stuff, if you guys respond to the things that we've raised, we can come together after that town meeting, and I think hit the road expeditiously, okay?
Yes, no, that's, that's helpful, and I think, uh, and I can look on your website as well, but in, just in terms of while looking through the, obviously the zoning code, but in terms of a more detailed site plan, um, what, what would you need from us on that, and or can you point me in the right direction of what I can, um, where I can find that information? But like something more, because obviously we could put something together more detailed that shows landscape buffers and stuff like that, but is that what you would be kind of looking for in this first submission that we'd be doing in early, um, in early May, or would you be looking for, you know, the drainage calculations?
No, no, not drainage calculation, but we'd definitely be looking for, you know, buffer zones, setbacks, that type of thing.
Okay.
You know, because we need to, we need to make sure that, you know, it's going to accurately represent what you guys built.
Yeah, yep.
Yeah, so basically you want to go to section four of the zoning bylaw for the town of Berlin, go to um, section four fifty Village Overlay District, page twenty-seven, and read up on exactly what's required in that, and, and in that document, they'll sometimes refer to some other parts of the zoning bylaw that you have to, have to comply with as well, but it's, it's pretty well spelled out in terms of what, what you need to do.
Yep, and, yeah, so I think, again, the basic thing is give us information that is oriented to that, because that's what we have to judge us by. Um, I think in terms of other things, softer things like you know, it's a, a lot that has trees on it to screen and so on. It's sort of up to you. If you think that uh, you have good ideas for mitigating the impact, put it in there. Um, it's an iterative process, so what you present to us at the next meeting is what we will consider. You may decide those sort of buffer areas that I just talked about are better dealt with after we have had our next meeting. That's fine too, but keep in mind that whatever you present is whatever we have to look at and determine, okay?
Yep, no, that is crystal clear, understood. Okay. Well, awesome, I think that's it. I think that's it for questions on, on my end. Uh, Matt, do you have anything for that while you're on?
No, nothing for me.
Great, well, um, in terms of questions, email correspondence, just keep responding to that uh, planning board email. Uh, that I think I've had a little bit back and forth on, is that still the right one?
Yeah, you can do that, I'll forward it to everybody.
Awesome. Okay, great. Well, I appreciate all your time this evening. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks.
We so the next item that's on our agenda is uh, reviewing any of the language for the hearing, uh, the articles that are going to be for us in the hearing. I think that's what you, how you worded it.
Well, yeah, I don't know what we actually need to do there. There were some really minor changes to what we uh, kind of reviewed and voted on a couple meetings ago.
For the ADUs.
Yeah, for the ADUs, and then Tim had some changes recommended for the um, flip plane. Including our question that didn't get answered, right?
Right. I mean, I basically left the language the way it was after I got in touch with Katie, and she responded that the feds wanted the language that she'd given us included, so I said, okay, we'll live with this for the time being, and if yeah, we do a, a generalized review of all our zoning, um, we can touch up stuff. I, I didn't think there'd be too many wrinkles as a result of accepting this the way it's written. I think we can.
Yeah, there was, we had a question about, it, it said, uh, using the best available maps.
Yeah, and she was like, yeah, that's what we mean.
Right. That's up for us to decide, I guess, or the building inspector, or whatever.
Yeah, great.
Some, I don't know.
Someone else, right?
Exactly.
Actually, thinking back to the uh, A D U, from the last time we had a meeting, I think one change was, we had put in um, site plan review as a requirement, and then I went, as I was writing that in, I went to read that section in our bylaw and realized it was a list of all the things that we're not allowed to ask for with the ADUs.
Yeah.
So, so, so I, Tom and Tim and I talked about, we just took it out.
And Jay and I attended one of the A D U sessions that Central Mass held, and we asked that question about the, the feeling that there may be conflict between what our bylaw required and, and what the state was asking for, and and Jane said, no, you, you want to stay away from that, so we can dance around it again later down the road, perhaps we can find some way to include some opportunity to involve some sort of sub-plan, but it would have to be all-encompassing for all residential activities, so.
Right, I thought site plan review was allowed. Oh, is, where, is it that we were asking for site plan review if there were two units?
We were asked in general, so we were gonna get in trouble.
Right, I, I seem to remember that you can ask for it for anything over the one that is by right.
Yeah, when you go to above the one by right, you're now into the local A D U, like our
And you can require site plan review at that point.
Do whatever you want there.
Yeah.
When we were discussing in our meeting, um, one of the points that Tim made was it gave a butter's enough, you know, a, a forum to be able to present their case and have some influence over it, which I think is still a goal we should try to meet somehow, right? And I'm just not sure how. You know, we were envisioning that, that Z B A might ask for some kind of revisions, but not.
Yeah, I think the, the problem that we run into is that we're obviously not going to ask for site plan approval for a single-family residential units, and because we don't ask for that, we can't ask for it in this case, according to the way the state stuff is written, so.
Yep, some other things that came up, and I'm not sure in what form, maybe it was with the uh, Jane's um, meeting. One of them, interestingly, was, I mean, there's certainly a definition of manufactured homes, even though it's not referenced in it. But one question was, how do manufactured homes get rough inspections? I think the building inspector's been talking about this. Because you might go to buy your manufactured home in New Hampshire, right? And Richard is supposed to be inspecting it, but it's being built in another state. So I don't know that anybody's got an answer for that yet. But that's still, it's probably got to get worked on.
Well, how does it work now with a single-family prefab?
It's a good question, I don't know.
I mean, I, I would imagine it's the same problem.
They'll have an engineer that'll review it in the factory, who's licensed in the state of Massachusetts, files an affidavit, and that gets reviewed by the building inspector.
So why would it be any different if it was small? Yeah.
I think that's a good point, yep. Um, and then when we do, when someone does need to get, get a variance, which is not unlikely, I think for setbacks. I don't know that we have any guidelines.
Well, yay, right. See, i- if, if you can demonstrate a hardship, you can't get a variance, and the hardship would be very difficult to demonstrate in the case of a, a newly constructed project like this. I think that's what Jane was commenting on the other day.
What does hardship mean?
Is, well, Suzanne, uh, is in the audience, she probably has the memorized four issues that are utilized in determining a hardship by the Z B A. She's not raising her hand, though, is she?
She's not. Oh, there she is. There you go, so.
Hi, I don't know if I have an answer for you.
Come on.
Well, uh, in the past, hardship was demonstrated, um, that usually that usually by constrictions like wetlands or um, where the well is, um, and they're doing an addition, those kinds of things, that that it would be uh, an extreme financial hardship to comply with the bylaws.
Right, like if you had to dig a new well.
Yeah, the one I'm thinking in particular, it, uh, there was one um, last year over by Rue's garage and we had to, it it was a definite hardship because they were doing an addition, but the well was sort of right where they needed to put the addition, so they needed to push the addition closer to the property line and reduce the setback in order to get the addition in. And the neighbors were okay with it, so we allowed that side yard setback variance. Rather than make them dig a whole new well.
Right, so if if somebody wanted to build an ADU in the backyard, whether it was attached or not, and that same scenario came up, would that be considered a hardship?
Uh, you mean the one that's allowed by right? I, well, I can't speak for the whole board, but it is something that we would consider that, you know, there's essentially, if there's no other place to put it, then you look at the variance.
But so a hardship is an inability to reasonably use one's property. For example, if a zoning ordinance makes it impossible to construct a building on a vacant lot, an owner may have grounds for arguing hardship.
Yep.
But in this case, you you already have a structure, you already have the use of your property, and you're asking for an additional use, which that we don't have to, you know, you don't have to supply a variance for for that. It's
No, I.
Not within the scope.
I agree with you completely. It, to draw a bottom line on it, to claim hardship under a situation which you could do a one ADU and you wanted variances for a second ADU. I I can't imagine that would qualify for hardship.
But what if it was just for the one ADU?
Yeah, and I.
That's not what we're talking about, but go go ahead.
Oh, I thought that's what we were talking about.
Right, that's what I thought we were talking about, too.
I think you'd find it, and and this is what I think the response was from Jane the other day. You you're not going to be able to demonstrate a hardship if you already exist on a lot and you have the use of the lot, and you want to expand the use by adding an additional dwelling unit. That there's no reason that we have to look at that as a hardship. You already have use of your property. So you can't demonstrate a hardship simply by saying, I I want to build, you know, another housing unit on my property and I'm not allowed to.
I completely agree with that. Yep.
I'm not sure that's consistent, though, with all of the intent. On the PADU, I can see on on the local ADU, but on the um, you know, the by right ADU, that may not be the expectation of the state.
Well, how does that, um, if someone's doing a garage and family room addition on an existing house, how do you tell them they can't enlarge their house because they they have a house, so anything they want to add on is not a hardship?
Yeah, you you can do that.
But we don't do that, right, Sue?
Well, this one that I was just talking about, it was a hardship. We let them put an addition on their house.
But what you do is you hold a public hearing, you allow Butters to comment, and if Butters came in and said, well, whoa, what are we doing here? You know, you're this is beyond the scope, you could say no. You've got the ability to say no.
But do we have the ability to say no for a a PADU?
I think that what Jane was saying the other day was you don't have to go with a and accept a variance for an additional unit on a property that's already got a dwelling. Um, and I think that's something that we need to check into, but that's the way they reacted to the question in in my mind.
That's something we definitely need to clarify because that's different than what I had understood before. Yeah.
Well, I I think we're going to see some guidance on that over the next years. Because the the definition, you know, it said that a PDADU could be built kind of in spite of existing zoning, right? But it always says, you know, except for dimensional, something rather, it always seems to be setbacks out.
Right, right, that
Understand.
that you always have to follow set current setbacks.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we may get more guidance on when that's a problem and you need to get some guidance for the ZBA on when to allow it and when not. Like, what is a hardship? Is it, it's not being able to put an ADU on my property so I can afford to live there because I'm going to get the rent. Is that hardship? Right?
Right, and but then how do you ask for proof for that?
Right.
Can I see your taxes for the past few years? Well, you know, I mean, that that gets into a whole can of worms.
So. So, for example, a limitation on the size of a home that may be built on a property could cause personal hardship to an owner who may need additional bedrooms for a growing family. This, however, is likely not sufficient as grounds for a variance, as the hardship must be based on a unique condition of the property itself. And then they say, what's the purpose of requiring a hardship for variance? Variances under Massachusetts zoning law aren't meant to be granted on a whim just because someone wants one. Rather, one is supposed to have a really strong justification for needing one. What is not a hardship? There are several circumstances that generally not recognize as hardship. Hardship also does not exist from simply being located next to a zoning district. For example, if you own a property in a residential zoning district that is across the street from a business district in which to use your property for commercial purposes generally doesn't sufficiently. But anyway, somewhere I've come across sort of, you know, the four hurdles or three hurdles, three that you need to understand when you grant variances for hardship, so. Um, but we'll get, we can get more clarification as we proceed, I'm sure.
The zoning is is meeting tomorrow night. If you would like to uh, join us, I know that Lynn Ryan is well versed in what constitutes a hardship.
Yeah.
Yep. The other issue I have on my list of PDU topics, I don't know if we talked about it or not, is the street numbers. So if you've got, if you put in a separate driveway for your ADU on a lot, what number goes on the mailbox? Um, and I believe that the fire chief or the fire marshal or somebody in the fire department assigns.
Fire department assigns numbers.
Yeah, so I actually sent an email to Mike to get his opinion on it. And I haven't heard back from him. But I don't know if I told you my story. I got my house on my pink, my line greenhouse on the corner of Brewer and Central. And the driveway was like ten feet long onto Central, so I moved it around to Brewer and wanted to get the address changed to some number on Brewer, so the fire department could find it in the mail, you know, prospective tenants and everybody could find it. And I couldn't, I couldn't get that done. The fire department did not cooperate, but that was different people. Because if you try to put um both units on the same mailbox or two mailboxes together with the same number, the post office won't deliver the mail unless it's got a unit number or something on it, an A and B. So if you if you end up with same number in an A and B and somebody sends a letter without the A to B on it, they return it. I mean, so it's not a huge issue, but it's one that is on the list of stuff that needs to get sorted out.
I think when the fire departments are driving up the street and the building is engulfed in flames, they can figure out which unit.
Yeah, which one's A and which one's B?
Well, on the case, the one I was.
It's it's for for ambulances and stuff like that. I I don't.
Right, but think about, you know, my my spring house, right? You you don't want them going to
Right.
street with a fire truck. You want to go to Brewer. Of course, it's a nuisance when I go to rent it and I put it since the street address on it, nobody can find it, can't figure it out. Where is it?
Or they look up Central Street and see what a busy street it is and, yeah.
Maybe he'll come to one of our planning meetings, we can discuss it with him. That's all I have on my list so far, but I bet over the course of the year, just think about how much in our current zoning bylaw, and we're making such a radical change, I'm sure there are going to be a ton of issues that have to get sorted out.
So Jay, is the the bylaw that's printed different than what we want to have voted on?
I think the difference is only like a typo and some real minor thing. I'm pretty sure when we took out the site plan review and there's a couple of things that were significant, I'm pretty sure that made it in before the warrant was published.
So if it's just a typo or so, you we can probably make a motion to accept the bylaw with these changes in in uh, text, you know, not text, but just that practical typo stuff and not have to make an amendment to it. If if it's substantive in some way, then we'll have to present it and then probably
amended.
amend it.
Yeah, I'll I'll look it through it and um, send a red line or something to you guys.
Good.
Don't use your new outlook.
Yeah.
Nonsense. I did send you the email, though.
Yeah, I saw it.
I just got it, yeah.
I went down and got a picture of the site of the hotel for you. Did you see it?
No. Uh, Sue, I'm gonna put you back in the audience.
Picture what?
Thanks, bye bye.
Bye, Sue. And a picture of the old liquor store that's still there.
Yeah, which on their drawing looked further down the site than it looks on the street view.
I was looking as we were talking and um, if you go on Google Maps and look at satellite view, you can see the outline of exactly where they want to put it. And if you compare uh, that space to the space for the current hotel, it's substantially smaller. It's much closer to the road. And it's also if you imagine it being built there and look at those apartments, there's all row apartments that look out to, you know, to the surrounding terrain.
Yes.
You're looking at hotels, so.
I also noticed that it takes away any green space that is between the apartment and the road. And puts the and puts the parking lot for the hotel right up against the apartments.
And the parking lot on the other side right against the road, so there's no, there's a nice buffer with some shade trees and stuff.
And and that's without the full amount of parking they need.
It's close to one sixteen versus one ten.
Yeah, it depends on what's going on on the north end there with that road.
Well, that road is paved, if you look at it in.
It's paved. It's paved and they and it's the entrance. The secondary entrance.
Okay, it doesn't look that way on on the satellite view, it may be.
I'll go inspect tomorrow.
Right.
Because I was wondering whether they can move a lot of the parking up there, but uh, I kind of doubt it. Certainly, they wouldn't want to move the parking in front anywhere else, right?
Right, because then you're up against the daycare center.
Yeah, depending on how many rows of parking in, that's correct. Yeah.
Yeah.
But normally, I think they you don't want to have parking at the entrance of the hotel.
Close enough.
So it seems like it's a little big.
Right, and I can't, I I don't imagine they would consider a smaller hotel.
I don't think it scales here.
Yeah.
Start an issue in. But you know.
One hundred to one sixteen is their sweet spot for, you know, key units.
Right.
That's why I think he was asking us about, you know, if he needs to eat into their amenity spaces. If we have a, you know, a a bylaw for amount of square footage that we require for amenity spaces versus whether he can eat into it.
Is there anything in the overlay requiring with a green space requirement?
Sure.
Let me, let me return while we're looking at that to what Tom just said. That was one of the issues that I'm hoping they will identify that if they need modifications to the first floor in terms of amenities, I hope when they come before us again, they've identified that as an issue.
Right. Yep, and and it perfectly valid to put it on them.
Right.
Um, but we should also.
Absolutely, they're not taxpayers. We don't work for them. Even for nothing, you know?
Sure, but we should also be aware um, of what we require to make sure that they've identified what we require.
No, no, I I I totally agree, but I think we should put it on them and then we can review what they do. Yeah, they have commercial clients, we have.
They have staff.
Yeah. They can do that legwork and it's pretty fair for us to ask them that.
Yep, hundred percent.
Talking about the village overlay district, right?
Yeah.
Yep.
Residential uses shall comprise at least twenty five percent and no more than sixty five percent of the combined residential floor area gross leasable area.
Hmm, is the hotel a resident?
Yeah, is hotel residential use or commercial?
All right.
Well.
I would argue commercial as well.
Yeah, I think that's pretty clear. But again, that's one of the other issues and a great one, Jay. We should have a list of things we expect them to address.
Yeah.
Yes.
Um, and hopefully they will have addressed them all and will have actionable information. If they haven't addressed one of them, then after the next meeting, we say, okay, back to school on this.
Yeah. Yeah, there's a thing about entries, lobbies and stairs, the next twenty percent of the ground floor area.
That's what we're asking them to to say.
Right.
Does this comply or does this not? Tell us the exceptions and then let's talk about them.
Yep, you know what they do.
It, the 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 green area, the open space issue is a minimum village green area, sixty five percent of the entire village development plan area, so they'd have to be looking at the whole project.
That include the public gardens and all that stuff, the big retention ponds and.
Well, and all the property on the other, between the apartments and the Asabod.
Um, yeah. Yeah, no, I think the stuff that they've, you know, I think we'd have to look closely at that.
Yep.
Right.
Hey, Tim, maybe I can come over for a cup of coffee and you and I could deliver, can uh, put together a list of things that we think they should address and just leave it at that and see what they address and then raise the other ones as we need to.
Yep, I'd like that. Yeah, let me know when.
Yeah, cool.
I'm looking at the Google Maps and so the Basset Road exit and entrance crosses the paved parking area that, I mean, it's paved as it comes in, then it's crossing a paved area that is the old parking lot for the package store, but that then yields over to the driveway that's paved that goes into the daycare.
Um, that paved or crushed? I don't know.
That's paved and and then and looking at this, I'll drive it tomorrow, but the area from the back of the parking lot to the newly paved area that's leading away from the apartments on the northern side, that still looks paved too, but I'll check that.
Okay.
But that's just the short jog um, that connects the two. But there's definitely pavement leading into the daycare.
Okay, may may I just say that I I'm gonna drop off at nine o'clock. I have to be in the office in Boston at six thirty in the morning. Um, but I would ask, is there anything else that we want to consider or vote before the full board?
Vote for voting. What'd you say, Jay?
Adjournment, certainly.
Yeah, well, if I drop off, I think you can all, you can all pass that unanimously until you need my vote for that. Okay?
All right.
Well, if it's true, we'll do it before you leave.
All right.
If there's nothing else, I'm happy to make a motion.
Second. Oh, okay, then I'll I'll hang out for the end of the meeting, yeah.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
There is a motion and a second, and it's non discussable, so I'll ask you to vote. This time I'm going count, I'm going clockwise. JT?
Aye.
Thomas Andrew.
Well, I already argued this point, so I'll say aye.
Aye.
Charles McDonald.
Aye.
And Tom Sanford, aye. Motion carries the enus.